Reporting in progress.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, May 5th. I now call this meeting to order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly Mayor Newsom. Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Here.
Councilmembers Fia Kogoditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete the yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at an appropriate time. If calling in via the phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Tonight's study session, the San Mateo Police Department Youth Services Unit presentation by Chief Ed Barberini, Sergeant Tracy Unga and Timber Joyce. Sorry, it's not written well. But we will receive an informational presentation from the San Mateo Police Department Youth Services Unit. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, for having us tonight. My name is Kimber Joyce. I'm a lieutenant and I oversee our San Mateo Police Youth Services Unit and I'm here with Sergeant Tracy Unga. And I'm going to start with this first slide, which is just a guiding statement for all the work that we do in our unit. Mentoring today, building tomorrow, and strengthening our community. So I'm very excited to speak to you about our Youth Services Unit, although public speaking is not my favorite thing. But our unit is one of my favorite things. So thank you for having us. So our Youth Services Unit is very unique in that we have multiple parts that you can see up on the screen. So most cities, I would say, in our county would be lucky to have one of these, but we have four. And this truly is an example that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. So our parts that work together and strengthen each other are our Police Activities League, our Diversion and Prevention Services Program, our Explorer Program, and our Youth Services Officers, including K-9 Rookie. So our Youth Services Team is comprised of these individuals, these positions. And I'll often refer to them as the Small But Mighty Team, as you'll see with all the work that we're doing in our unit. So our team includes the Youth Services Lieutenant and Sergeant, a Juvenile Detective, Youth Services Officers, County Probation Officer, YMCA Clinical Case Managers, Parks and Rec Program Supervisor, PAL staff, Explorer Advisor Team, and our Therapy K-9 Rookie. And as you'll notice, that these team members are not just from the Police Department. We have other city staff on this team as well as outside county support, which is one of the strengths of our unit. So part of what makes us so strong is all the network of collaborators that we have within the county. This is just listing some of them. And it includes our school districts, our, all of our nonprofit organizations in the county, including PCRC, One Life Counseling. And again, this is just a network that we're trying to continue to grow to make our unit stronger, to serve our youth and families even better. So I'm going to start with our original piece of our unit, which goes back almost 30 years now. Our Police Activities League started in 1997. As several of you probably know, it's a partnership between the city, both the Police Department and the Parks and Rec Department, and also the nonprofit Board of Directors. Our, the nonprofit piece led by the Board of Directors raises funds that supports all of our PAL programming. And a big partner is all of our community partners, which I listed in the previous slide. So PAL's theme of all of our programs is promoting healthy futures of our kids. We break up our programs into buckets and you can see them on the screen. Sports development, enrichment activities, life leadership skills, including pathways to college and careers, prevention and intervention, diversion, and community engagement events. PAL is serving almost 1,500 kids and over 90% are reporting that they're low to very low income. So I'm not going to go through all of the programs. This is just to give you an idea of the breadth that we offer. So most PALs do offer some kind of sports, as do we. We try not, we try to offer different things. So we get out to kids that might not just like soccer or basketball. We offer ice hockey and luckily we have a great partnership with Ice Oasis in town. Again, an example of our collaborations that we have. A newer program is Cheer this year, just trying to bring in some more of our female participants. And hopefully this year we'll be starting a golf program. For those that don't want to participate in sports, we have enrichment activities. A very popular one is the Ballet Folkloric Dance Program. We just had an event this past Friday. They celebrated and performed the Dia del Niño and had almost 200 people in attendance. We are currently planning our field trips for summer, which are very popular. We get to take kids all over the Bay Area to experience things they might not otherwise be able to experience. Cooking is also always popular and our fishing trips are longstanding for probably 20 years. Well, we still have retired police officers coming back to volunteer their time to take kids out in the open sea. Now for our older kids, this is the Life and Leadership Programs that we offer. And this is really focused on the Explorer Program, which you often see our Explorers out in the community, college scholarships, and this is where our partnership with the Hillsdale Empowerment Through Action and the Bridge to Bridge Program falls. And now I'm going to hand it over to Sergeant Tracy Unga to speak a little bit more about our scholarships and Explorer Program.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Oh. Good evening. I'm excited to share with you the PAL Scholarship Program. PAL is proud to support the dreams of first-generation college students by helping remove financial barriers to higher education. Now in its second year, the program continues to grow in both impact and reach, expanding from 11 to 17 recipients this year. And if you attended our Lights and Sirens Dinner, you would have seen the 17 well-deserved recipients. This program is especially near and dear to my heart as I was a first in my family to go to college. And I understand how it helps support these kids' dreams of going to college and many of whom are paving a path that no one in their family has walked before. What makes this program even more meaningful is that it allows students to return and reapply as they continue their educational journey, reinforcing our long-term commitment in PAL to their success and development. PAL is investing in the future leaders and opening doors to brighter futures. As you can see the photo, so the one on the left is last year's recipients and the one on the right is the one we just had a few weeks ago. So it was really great to see us expand to 17 this year and we hope to continue to expand it even more next year. But it is the largest Explorer post in the county. We have about 20 Explorers that are in the post and their ages are between 14 and 21 years old. It continues to be one of the most impactful youth leadership programs in our community. And we're proud of the program because it provides young people with a structured environment where they can learn discipline, teamwork, confidence, and a sense of responsibility. Explorers are introduced to the world of law enforcement through training, mentorship, and community service, gaining practical skills they can carry with them into future careers. Just want to note, not all of these kids actually want to go into law enforcement, but what a great program this is to build confidence and leadership. For those who do have a desire to go into law enforcement, what a great way to learn about it. And I wish I had something similar when I was their age. The dedications evident in the thousands of volunteer hours, and I mean thousands of hours that these young people put in. Not only are they at all our PAL events, if you've had the chance to attend, they are now at pretty much every big city event that happens in the city of San Mateo to include Extravaganza, Music in the Park, they just attended Boba Day, Central Bark Bike Rodeo, Fourth of July, pretty much any city event that they're requested to come out with, they will volunteer their time to come. And it's really great to see young people step up and serve the community. I won't list all of these, but there are a ton of community and family events that PAL does all throughout the year and I'll highlight a few of them. Backpack Palooza, we are actually in the process of planning as we speak. Last year, we gave out over 400 backpacks and school supplies to many families in our community. And what I've learned, I think we've been doing it now for at least five years in PAL, and these families really rely on this every year. For those parents in the room, you know how expensive it can be to buy backpacks and school supplies. And so year after year, PAL figures out a way to provide these to our families. And one thing I can tell you is that every year, the number gets higher and higher. So last year, we served over 400. It could be higher this year. We'll know once we put it out. The next thing on here is our 5K Run, which is our run slash walk, which is a mental health awareness 5K. And that is actually happening May 31st this year. That event always brings three to 400 people in our community out as well. And it does really bring awareness to mental health in our community. Dia de los Muertos, if you've had the opportunity to come out to the King Center every October, this event brings out hundreds of people from North Central, which is a lot of our PAL membership. So it's really great to see our families come out and celebrate. We also have our We also have our, Kimber talked about, our Ballet Folklorical. They get a chance to get on stage and perform. So that's always really fun to see. Junior Giants is on here as well this year. Again, this program has grown immensely. It runs every summer. And I think, last time I checked, we were 400-plus young people that will be participating in Junior Giants. And just want to put a little side note, it is a free program. So these, these parents are not paying to put their kids in this program, and that's huge nowadays for parents. Just a few others there. Bike rodeo, Family Fun Nights, Brunch with Santa. PAL does a brunch with Santa at the King Center every December. It's very well-attended by, gosh, probably 400 or 500 people attended that last year as well. So you kind of see our events get really big. And then Santa Cop, for those of you, I'm sure you've seen The Chief and the Old Car driving around San Mateo. We deliver gifts to about, about eight to 10 families. They're all mostly chosen by officers who have come in contact with families throughout the years. And so that's always a really fun event that we get to do. And then Prevention and Intervention. PAL and the Police Department are deeply committed to youth development through its prevention and intervention programs, which are designed to keep kids on track and out of trouble. Every day, PAL provides structured supportive programming that engages youth in positive activities. Some of the ones that are listed here, Kimber's going to go into our Youth Diversion Program a little bit later, which also couples with our Prevention Services Program. We offer individual and family counseling. We have a PAL's Place in East Shoreview Community Center. Homework help, bike safety, anti-tobacco and vape education. We have an officer that specializes in that, Officer Carlos Basurdo. Social media safety and school outreach.
Thank you. And before I move into our Division and Prevention Services Program, I wanted to go back to PAL and just mention that our programs are free to low cost to our kids. And then also a shout out to the Parks and Rec Department for offering space at many community centers and fields. We wouldn't be able to do it without the space that we have to run the programs. So our diversion program is very unique in that some police departments do have it, and it might be run by one officer or detective. And some agencies will actually send their diversion cases to an outside nonprofit. But what makes our program so unique is we bring all the pieces together here through the Police Department by partnering with both a nonprofit through the YMCA, and then also our County Probation Department, our Police Activities League, and other community-based organizations. I also want to point out that the partnership is funded primarily externally, not by the city. The only thing funded through the city is the, the police positions that run the program. So San Mateo County actually reimburses us for the YMCA Clinical Case Managers. And then the Probation Department offers an in-kind position that is housed here at the Police Department. So our, our diversion program, if, if you didn't have a diversion program, I'll just walk you through what would happen. Young, a youth gets in trouble somehow, commits some crime, whether it's petty theft or vandalism, something, a small fight. And the case would go to the Police Department and then get sent up to what we call Hillcrest, which gets sent into the juvenile justice system. Where our diversion program is different is every single case that a juvenile is involved in, where there's some kind of crime, the report actually goes through Tracy's office. She reviews every single case and determines whether or not they are eligible for our diversion program, or if it will be just an info-only case, or if it does need to get referred up to Hillcrest for action just based on the level of the crime. Our diversion program is for first-time, low-level crimes. It can be flexible because we do have a team that can determine whether or not we can provide the services for that particular youth. We do have an evidence-based needs assessment that's given by our Clinical Case Manager and our Probation Officer, which is called a Jace and a Cans Assessment. It's a six-month program that includes monthly education classes, counseling sessions. And I do want to point out that the counseling sessions, the youth has to attend at least three with their family. And they can determine if they need more with their family, but it's a minimum of 10 total and three with their family. And during these sessions, not just in counseling, but with the check-ins with our probation officer and the Clinical Case Manager, you really learn that these kids have all had some kind of trauma in their life. And as you, as they get into the program, as Tracy says, you, you start peeling that onion and seeing kind of what is deeper and just why we saw the little crime that happened based on what's, what's going on in the core. And that's what we're trying to get to, is to be able to serve and help them with whatever that trauma is. We also get them involved in community engagement. And often, this is where PAL will come. They will volunteer at many of our PAL events. And not only do they volunteer as helpers, but they all become PAL kids as well. And they are required to participate as a participant in some kind of fun activity to get them positively engaged. There are home and school check-ins done regularly by our Clinical Case Manager, our Probation Officer, and our Youth Service Officers. So as you can see with all of these services, we really try and tailor the program to the youth and their needs. So it could be, one youth might have more and one youth might have less, depending on what's going on. So our, our program is really, it's been around for 20 years. But when I say that, it was led by one Juvenile Detective back in the day. And we've slowly built it up by adding the YMCA Clinical Case Managers. And then in 2018 is when probation joined the team. Our success rate is extremely high in that 90% of our participants do not go and re, there's no recidivism. So 90% of those are not re-offending. Our referral rate, how many kids we're actually taking into the program, unfortunately, is going high. So pre-COVID, we were taking approximately 25 youth into our program. And as you can see, in 2021 and 2022, we had 20. And we started doing voluntary services at that time, where they weren't necessarily committing a crime, but they were committing some kind of behavior that was potentially going to lead to crime. So we had 27 kids just come into the program for extra support coming out of COVID. 2022, 23, we are at 49 in the program and 16 voluntary, 23, 24, 42 in the program, and 13 voluntary. And so far this year, at Q3, we have, have had 56 in the program. And I just want to point out that as these numbers have gone up, that our team size has remained the same while we continue to do all the other services that we're doing through the PAL and through our Explorer Program. And, and lastly, these kids that go through this program is, it's really interesting to see. They come in, they do not want to be in that classroom that first day. And then six months later, or however long, they don't want to leave because they've created these relationships with our entire team. And they'll often come back and volunteer, but they are connected to the city through the Police Department, through Parks and Rec, and even through city services or county services that we've connected them to. So before I hand it over, we're going to talk about the, kind of the glue of our entire unit, which is our Youth Service Officers and our Youth Service Sergeant. And I'm going to point out that we changed the name a few years ago from School Resource Officer to Youth Service Officer. And the primary, primary reason is because they are not just serving in the school. That is their primary role, and they spend most of their time serving in the schools. But they do all of these other things through PAL, our Explorers, and our diversion program that really does connect all the different pieces. So Sergeant Unga is going to speak to us about her awesome team.
I call them my dream team. Everybody laughs at me. But I am privileged and honored to be able to supervise these two amazing officers that we have here at San Mateo PD. And they play such an essential role to the success of our programs. And they are truly the P and PAL. And they're the driving force behind our connection with youth, our connection with the schools. And we're just, we're so proud and incredibly grateful for their dedication and their compassion. And if you ever get the chance to know them, you will understand exactly what I'm saying. They are just two wonderful human beings that the schools love them, youth love them, and families really love them as well. They do have specialized training in trauma-informed care and restorative justice practices, which they used when they approached the work that they do with youth and their families. The daily collaboration with school districts, administrators, teachers, students, and families is phenomenal because they, they are such a strong advocate and support for a lot of the youth in the community. Up on the screen is kind of some of the trainings that they put out to the community. I mean, on any given week, they get requests to do things like vape education and prevention, social media safety, any type of violence prevention. They're out there giving presentations to all the different schools in our area. And as you can see, there are flyers that the school district make of them, and they circulate them out to the community. Another thing that they, we also do are threat assessments. And so that seems to be something that they are doing a lot more and more of lately. And those are basically when you have a juvenile that's in crisis, whether it's a mental health crisis or a behavioral crisis. There is a team, a threat assessment team that, that meets. And so they've become very familiar with that process. We partner with the San Mateo County Office of Education on a Level 2 threat assessment, if it elevates to that as well. And then on there is, on here is also our Juvenile Detective, which we've been very fortunate that we've been able to fill that role in the last year or so. And that is Detective Jaime Basurdo, who is a former juvenile detective. So he comes to us with a lot of experience. And he's been really great at investigating crimes that involve, you know, children or victims, especially sexual assault-type crimes he specializes in. He's great with our diversion program. He is the officer in diversion that helps intake those young people into the program. And so I can't speak enough to how great it has been to have him as an addition to the team. Obviously, I have two officers that go out in the schools every day, but Jaime is definitely just as valued in our team as far as investigating those crimes that the YSOs don't necessarily always have time to commit to. So anything that needs a little more investigation, we hand over to Jaime. And I'm saying Jaime because the Basurdos are Basurdo brothers, so I have to say them by their first name, or I'll get them confused. But he's been a huge help, for sure, and a huge, huge piece of the team, of my dream team, as I call him. And then lastly on here is the School Safety Planning. So the Big Five Protocol that we have here in San Mateo County. The, our team is very versed on that. We help train the schools on, on the Big Five, as well as we work with the San Mateo County Office of Bed on this as well. We actually are in the process of planning a tabletop exercise with the San Mateo Union High School District to happen in. It's probably going to happen in August. But it's basically a critical incident tabletop where we're going to get all the principals in a room with, with several of our officers to go through an active shooter, tabletop critical incident, and what that would look like. And so that we, we can train together. We hope that nothing ever happens, but we definitely want to be ready to act if we ever need to. So we're looking forward to that tabletop that will be coming in August. And then this slide, I just wanted to kind of bring to your guys' attention. So SROs, Youth Service Officers, they've been around in City of San Mateo since 2005. And as you can see from the slide, when they first, from 2005 to 2014, the SRO was funded by the city. That's what they were referred to back then. And as the years have gone on, you can see, we went from one to three SROs. So in 2014 to 2018, I was actually an SRO back then. So I was one of those. We had three, and one was funded by the city because the city has always been committed to paying for that one officer. And then we had a SRO funded by both school districts. That continued on, as you can see, 2018, 2019. They funded 75% of them. And then in 2020, when the pandemic happened, the schools pooled the funding for both of those two positions. However, the city continued to fund it because they saw the value in having an officer there. Fast forward to 2022, the city continued to fund that one SRO position. And Lieutenant Kimber Joyce here wrote a DOJ grant and was able to get us another SRO, which was Officer Carlos Basurdo. And he focused on vape and tobacco education to our youth. That grant has since expired, and the city is still committed to two SROs. I do want to just note that, you know, the work, having been an SRO for many years, the work is still there. In fact, the work is more now than it was when we had three. But they're doing the work still with just two. And I just wanted to highlight that, that we could really benefit from having a third SRO. That model was really great because it was, we had one officer at every high school. And then they would work at the Feeder Middle School. And so it worked really great because you got to know the kids in middle school, and then you knew them in high school. And so that model was really ideal. It was like nothing else in the county. And a lot of, a lot of cities were jealous of it. And they thought it was a really great model, and it really was. And I would, I would hope that one day we would get back to that because it only benefits the youth in our community for many reasons. So I just wanted to highlight that. And then, I mean, the last page, I mean Rookie. Everyone knows Rookie. He is, I'm going to say probably the best thing we've done as a unit was to get Rookie in. And he, he does so much for the community. He does so much for, for kids in our community. You know, I think he also, what I never realized was what, how much he would do for the Police Department and how much he does for the men and women that serve the San Mateo Police Department. There are many that have to start their day by seeing this little guy every single day. So not only is he great for the community, but he's been wonderful for the Police Department as well. And I just want to note that, you know, he's super cute, and we all know that. But he's, he has some amazing training. He, from the time we got him, we got him as a little puppy. He was out there getting trained from, I think he was six weeks when we sent him to, to obedience school. And then he went to a lot of different trainings to teach him how to be a Therapy K-9 dog. And one thing I can say that I have seen is not all Therapy Canines get the type of training and the level of training that he's had. Officer Adel, Alison Adel has done a phenomenal job. She's put in thousands of hours of working with Rookie to get him where he is today. And, you know, he, he goes out on calls. We have mainly children that are victims for calls. He'll go out and he'll sit with them and, you know, help with trauma and their stress. He even testifies in, when people go to court, if there's a victim there and they need a Therapy K-9, he's highly requested throughout the county as well. So we have to share him with many cities across the county. But to say, everybody knows him. He's the most popular guy in the Police Department. Sorry, Chief, I think he's more popular than you. But he is definitely, he's got more followers on, on Instagram, I think, than the Police Department does. But he, he definitely was, was a great addition to our unit and our team. But he, he definitely was, was a great addition to our unit and our team. And we would hope one day to get more rookies because this little guy does a lot for everybody in the city.
Before we wrap up and go to questions, I'm just going to hit some of our program impacts. This is a letter that was written by a young person to PAL in Spanish that's translated to "thank you for making our lives so special and thank you for taking your time for us." So by giving time and support, we are able to, through the Youth Services Unit, reduce juvenile crime. We are building trust with law enforcement. We're encouraging leadership and responsibility amongst our youth while also supporting the youth facing adversity. We're creating safer schools and communities, developing future community leaders and strengthening families and communities. And I circle back to the first slide of our purpose of mentoring today, building tomorrow and strengthening community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for a fantastic presentation. Before we give comments, we will open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment?
Mayor Newsom, no request to speak in chambers. If you're participating virtually and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. Mayor Newsom, that's no request to speak on this item.
Thank you. We will close the public comment period and open it up to questions, comments and feedback from the council. Does anyone want to go first? Start this way. Councilmember Diaz Nash. Oh, you did, okay.
That's right. Well, we all love everything having to do with everything you said and, and both the two of you and your teams should please bring back our thanks because we see you in the community all the time. And it is, everything you said is on a PowerPoint presentation, but it's actually true and I have seen so much of it. So please, please bring back our thanks. You know, it's interesting, so many of the things you do are things we say in the community we want to do. Financial literacy is something that we were just up at Progress Seminar this weekend and had a session talking about many things education-related and how financial literacy and civic education is so important. So you're already doing it. Social media safety. And one question I had was, does that include really helping people understand how to identify misinformation and not just, obviously the safety part of it is critical, but does that get involved as well?
Yes, it does. We're speaking both to the youth and to the families and just also helping the youth realize that the content that they're putting out also is there forever as well. And to be able to decipher what is true and not true coming from social media.
Critical that we all should have. You know, another thing, you talked about the Explorer Program and how, you know, people may go into law enforcement, they may not. But one thing I really think you need to emphasize every time you talk about it is the fact that it builds community trust. Because even if those young individuals don't become law enforcement officers, they are out talking about their experience. They're, I mean, I'm, I'm talking to you, you understand that. But I think it's really important to underline that and I've been very impressed with, with what I've seen. But I'm interested, how many of the Explorers, like at the badge pinning last week, so many of them were interested in becoming officers. How many actually do? Do you have a rough understanding?
I'll take this one. You mean how many become officers?
Yeah, or become somehow related to the San Mateo Police Department.
Well, right now, I'd say about half the post definitely want to be police officers, which is great. We actually have, I've only been the Explorer Sergeant for four years now, but we have our first Explorer that's currently in the police academy. I think he was at our dinner, if you were there for the PAL dinner. And so that's pretty exciting times for us because he's, he's the first one in my time. And so all the ones behind him that want to become officers, which there's probably about another four or five that are trying to enter the process, they're, they're aging out of the Explorer Program because they're 21 or they're about to turn 21. So.
Yes, ma'am. Apologies. Thank you. Thank you for that and I hope that they are successful and even more so. And I'm interested if, you know, I see it, the, the community officers, the ones that used to be called school resource officers is so important to, once again, building trust, building relationships. And what's the current feeling about between the school district as to how they see these roles and, and how they generally see partnership with you?
You know, I think, as I spoke earlier, the officers that we have in those roles and those positions, how could you not just love working with them, right? And so, you know, there, there obviously were some times early on when, when, especially after the pandemic, when we were no longer in the schools and we worked really hard to get back to, to where we are today. And that is working together. Like we all work together, the schools work together with us. And quite frankly, we're better together and I think we all, we all realize that. So I think we're in a very good place with our schools and our police department and we'll continue to do what we do and, and hopefully we can get back to a place where we have an officer in every high school, like I said, the model I said earlier.
Yep, thank you. Well, anything, I'll speak for myself, anything I can do, but perhaps with my colleagues to support, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Lieutenant Joyce and Lieutenant Ungar and the chief for the great presentation. I, you don't notice it, but you know, as council members, we are at every, like we try to be, some of us need, are, try to be at every city event represented in some way and the Explorers are always there. You guys are always there. So thank you for being everywhere and just building that sense of community. I am to kind of piggyback off what, I was going to say Assembly Member, Council Member, Councilmember Diaz Nash said. I am concerned about the data points that you said with regards to the fact that the San Mateo Foster City School District and San Mateo Union High School District no longer partners in funding the resource officers. So I just want to take a moment and just, I've said these in our two by twos because me and, me and Mayor Newsom are, are part of the school liaison committee. I just want to express my disappointment in those boards for opting not to continue those partnerships because if you just look at the breadth of this PowerPoint and the partnerships and the sense of community and the mitigation that we are able to do because we brought that commit, that community, I don't know that those school boards understand. And I really hope that they will come to the table now that we are a few years removed from COVID and, you know, resume that partnership because it ultimately benefits all of our kids. So I just wanted to say that and put it out there. I know that this is a blue sky priority for the council and thank you to council members from Guditsky for bringing that along. But I'd just like to, if anybody from either of those bodies is listening, I would just like to encourage you all to come back to the table because that partnership is important for our whole community. Thank you.
I just want to echo, it's a great presentation and we really value the work you guys are doing. I know you mentioned that you currently have two officers. Can you remind us how many schools there are to cover?
There's new schools that pop up all the time, I feel like, but last time I checked that we were at 26. Don't quote me, but.
So we have two officers.
Those are private, publicly, all kinds of schools, charter schools, yeah, K through eight and also preschools. So at least last I checked, 26.
Well, I can't say thank you enough to those guys for covering so many schools. I know that's difficult. Can you kind of walk us through how they rotate around and what, what does their schedule actually entail?
So they work a 410 schedule. And so luckily with two of them, there's always, unless they're both on vacation, which we try not to do, there's always somebody on duty. So one works Monday through Thursday and then the other one works Tuesday through Friday. So we never have a day when we don't have a YSO on duty to cover the schools. And then as far as like their day-to-day schedules, they get dispatched to schools all day long and they go out and they handle predominantly all of our school calls. Occasionally, like today, we had, it's Monday, so we have one working and she was tied up on school calls and so patrol had to go out and handle them, which happens quite often. To be honest, there's times when they're both tied up on calls at different schools and so we have to utilize our patrol teams to go out and handle school calls. And oftentimes with, with school-related calls, they're not, they're, they're different than our normal patrol calls in, in that they're time, they're time-consuming because a lot of times it's sitting with the school, sitting with, you know, admin, with students and, you know, trying to hear what the problem is. So they're, they're not your typical type of police calls that I would say patrol takes, which is what makes the YSOs so great because they, they do have the ability to spend the time on the calls. But if you can imagine patrol calls coming in and patrol handling them, that, that is a huge, a huge issue for patrol when there's a lot of school calls.
And then, thank you for that. You mentioned that, you know, the, the rates are going up in terms of students requesting or needing the deferment program, which by the way, I totally agree with you, we're super lucky to have that. It's a great program. I'm just curious if there's any trends or reasons for that. You know, I know loneliness has been a big pandemic topic. If we're seeing any trends out of, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic, that that's why those numbers are going up?
Yeah, I can speak to, so what I've seen post-pandemic is that the mental health has gone up immensely in our young people. And so I think that has a lot to do with the numbers on the diversion side going out because as Kimber mentioned earlier, once we get a kid in the program and we unpeel the onion, I like to say, and provide wraparound services for that young person, we realize like a lot of times the root of what's going on is, is mental health related. And so post-pandemic, I think that's a big reason why the numbers have gone up so much because of that. So yeah, did that answer your question?
Yeah. And then actually for Kimber, obviously the federal government is cutting funding right now, but are there any grants that we've looked at? Are we seeing anything or, I don't know if Ed wants to answer that or not?
I, I do look and Chief actually sends me anytime something even looks close. We did recently submit a grant for, for a school resource officer or youth service officer that's focused on threats and threat assessment and violence provision, prevention. There was another federal grant we were looking at, but it was pulled. So we do consistently look for them and if they are applicable, we'll apply for them.
Awesome, thank you. Those are all my questions, but I just want to stress, you know, and it sounds like there is support, but I do think this is a really critical function for the entire community, our youth are our future. And so, you know, we should continue to look at ways where we can invest and partner with the school, schools and administration to find funding there. So that's all, and great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you through the mayor, Lieutenant Sergeant. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate a number of questions that my colleagues have already asked. I was just curious whether there happen to be opportunities for children who have gone through the diversion program. Have you seen any return and potentially apply for the Explorer Program or other ways in which they can volunteer and become a broader part of, of PAL or the organization?
Yes, there are opportunities and we do always try and open up, whether it's PAL or the Explorers, to any of the diversion or prevention kids. They are PAL kids. Since I've been in this position, I don't think anyone's taken us up on it. It just isn't their thing, but there could be one in our future and we would definitely be open to it. But I do say that they do still stay involved with us. So it might not be as an Explorer, but it is with our team through our probation officer and our youth service officers, they're just connected and also through our relationships with our schools.
Thank you. And I, it's, I've appreciated seeing Rookie for many years now and it looks like he hasn't aged a day, but I suspect that he has in fact done so. And I was just curious how long we can expect to have Rookie in our service?
Very good question. We actually, hopefully many more years. So we just extended Officer Adel's time in the Youth Services Unit to be able to be Rookie's handler for several more years, undetermined how many, but definitely we see the value of the pair of them in our Youth Services Unit and would like to keep them as long as possible. So at least a couple of years is, is my hope. And then if, if and when they do rotate out, we would hopefully bring in another therapy canine into our unit because it's just so beneficial.
Excellent, thank you. Well, I echo my, my colleagues' comments praising your work, the breadth and depth of the services you provide and the offerings. And of course, I, as, I've also seen the Explorers at many of our events and, and it's clear that these programs show the, the positive, you know, image of what law enforcement can bring to our community. It's not just in our worst moments necessarily, but providing leadership, mentorship and other counseling and other services is a great way to show our community that there's, there's more to it than, than, than merely sporting crime, I suppose, or, or, you know, any negative impressions one might get. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for a fantastic presentation. I echo everything that's been said. I want to make sure that I do put weight behind a few things that have been brought up. Specifically, I think there's definitely interest on the city council's whole part to help us find funding and get another SRO. I think we should work as a council to put pressure or continue to put pressure, and we've been putting pressure, but continue to put pressure on the school district to come back to the table and look for more opportunities with our grant writer. I think we should make sure that we, when it comes to funding, we're also planning ahead for not maybe even having a crossover. So when Rookie starts to get a little older, we have a few years with Rookie Two or whoever we call, maybe Rookie goes to, you know what I'm saying? The other things are, I think it's fantastic and some, a real point of pride that we have such a great Explorer Program. I have been working a lot recently with the Pacific Skyline Council, which, you know, is kind of the top-level organization for Explorer Programs. And we do have Explorer Programs in addition to just the law enforcement. We do have one in the county that does specifically fire that's based out of Redwood City. And although it's not as cool because it's not tied to San Mateo, there's definitely the ability that if we have people that might be interested in that, it would be great to kind of find a path to guide them that way. But that's it. More for our, our PD. Explorers is great. The other thing that they have that is starting out this year, which is pretty exciting, is that the trades are starting Explorer Programs. So San Mateo County will be the first to have a plumbing Explorer Program for students or youth between the age of 15 and 20, which is a great intro into the trades. And I'm, I would not be surprised if in the next few months, they also look at this for electricians as well, because the unions have been talking about this for the last couple of months. And so another great opportunity for people, especially young, young children as they're coming through the program, maybe if they don't feel comfortable in wanting to be a police officer or work in the police affiliated Explorer Post, there is opportunities for trade Explorer Posts, which are great career opportunities and great paths for them. So just wanted to call that out and make sure that we kind of start working that into the talk track. And then the last thing was, I was curious if you had any idea, so I saw that the number of people currently assigned was, students was, or youth was 53, I think, for this year, 50, sorry, 56 referral. How many of those are voluntary of the 56? Do you have an idea or are they all?
Those are all.
Okay. And then, do we know percentage-wise, and not just for the referral rating, but also like what percentage of your calls are for high school versus middle schools or middle school or below?
I don't have that right in front of me, but we could look into it. We do get. I, we do get, I, it used to be more high school and less with the middle school and even less with the elementary school. But at the past, I would say since post-COVID, we've seen in significant increase in our middle schools and even more significant crime behavior happening at the elementary schools where we weren't seeing that at all before. So I would say definitely an increase in the elementary and definitely the middle schools.
All right. Well, the, the political will I feel of both of those, as I interact with them, is that we, we have maybe an easier road to go to get the high schoolers back on board, high school participating again with funding. But it would also help to have those statistics so that we could have deeper conversations with our elementary school district.
Understood.
Yeah, if you could provide that for us, it'd be great. That's all I have, other than thank you for fantastic work. You really, the Youth Services Unit is really a big face for the San Mateo PD. And it, our, our program and our police department are fantastic and our youth services make them look even more so. So thank you for all you do and we really appreciate it. And anything that we can do to help support you, please know that you have an open door to all of us and we, we want to make you all continue to be successful. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, real quickly, just wanted to kind of add on, I hear from the council, the direction of working with the school districts in order to see if we can partner with them to increase the support of our Youth Service Officer. Chief, do you want to talk about just really quickly the work that we've been doing the last couple of months in our meeting with the superintendents?
No, it's not like that. This one works. Yes. Yes, we've met with both superintendents on a regular basis. And we've actually been meeting with the superintendents regularly for the past few years. I even sat down with our local superintendent, the San Mateo Foster City School District, and our county superintendent, Superintendent McGee, to kind of discuss the future and options moving forward. So we're continuing to explore that. We, we, we do have an item that's, that's tabled currently with, with San Mateo Foster City, not necessarily for a YSO, but for Powell programming on a contractual basis to kind of be able to do more. I think it's, the one thing that gets lost in this conversation is, not only is this one of the most impactful programs the police department has, there is no greater return on investment, not only because the impact is so strong, because the investment is so small. Almost, I'd say well over half, if not up, up 70% of the services that we're receiving in our Youth Services Unit are funded from an external source. Powell being a huge one. Powell funds Sergeant Ungus' position. It funds a conrequisition. I want to quell the fears about Rookie. Rookie's not going anywhere. It's not Rookie that we're concerned about. That's, his handler is a very talented individual and we want to make sure that she has the career options and, and future that she deserves. So we will, Rookie is a very young dog and will be around for a long time. But we have Rookie because of Powell, just Rookie. So I think that the conversations with the school districts are encouraging, can be a little lengthy. And so we're hoping, we're hoping for the best regardless of whether that works out or not, as Lieutenant Joyce mentioned, and kudos to her for really solidifying a huge grant for us to get us through a very difficult time. And, and we've made some adjustments even after the expiration of that grant to sustain the, the importance of this position is just so strong that we were just able to move some money around. But when we do that, we're sacrificing other areas of the department. So we're very hopeful with the, with the pinning grant application and we'll continue to talk, talk with the schools. So we're, we're still on the table, I think, with the high school district. The funding model that we had discussed was even a compromise compared to the funding model that you saw from several years ago, where if it's not a full position, maybe the, the two districts might want to be willing to split a position, which would even be helpful. Anything would, would help. It's just that we are so lucky to have such dedicated individuals that they're willing to go the extra mile and work that extra hour or eight hours, you know, sometimes double shifts. But I don't know how long we can, we can sustain that and keep our service levels at what they are now. Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess with that, we will, we have nothing else, right? We will close this special session. Thank you again for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.